Good evening and welcome to the Trumbull Housing Authority Regular Meeting of August 28th. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Roll call Barbara, please.
Kathy McGannon.
Here.
Laurel Anderson.
Here.
Sarah Fleeger.
Here.
Maureen and Charlene are not available.
Okay. We have approval of the June minutes, the June 25th minutes. Anybody have any motion for additions, corrections, deletions? But I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Sarah.
Sarah moves.
Second. Laurel.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, any public comments? Is there anybody on?
If any member of the public would like to make a comment at this time, please press the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Or press star nine if you're on the phone.
So give it a look.
There are no hands raised at this time.
All right, then I'll close public comments and we'll go to the report of the Director of Finance.
Hey, good evening. We have received the tenant selection plan and new lease for the congregate from the attorney yesterday. We're reviewing and we'll send to the board for review for the next, for next month hopefully. And we'll ask if Karen can attend. Tony Pho, who's in charge of the congregates for the state, has requested a copy from us to use as a template for other congregates for the state of Connecticut. So I told her as soon as we get approval and the board approves that we will send it to her and then we will let her use it as a guide for other congregates for the state of Connecticut, which I thought was kind of a nice thing for her to do and a credit to the attorney and all of Trumbull Housing Authority who have had input on that tenant selection plan and lease. Repairs continue to be ongoing and we're working with maintenance to monitor inventory. Units have been categorized by priority and Jackie has been instrumental in making sure that we're doing the units as quickly as we can and looking at what needs to be done in each unit. So we're working closely with maintenance to try to keep the inventory open and get new tenants in here as soon as possible. Jackie can probably fill you in or Paulette when we get to their reports as well.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions on right now?
All right, we'll move on to the report on the congregate, Ann.
Yes, hi, good evening. I'm happy to report we're at 91% capacity, 33 occupied, three unoccupied. We did have a residence meeting in mid-August and for those who attended, it was a very positive meeting. They had a lot of good ideas. We had prepared a survey for them to get an idea of what they would like to see as activities. And we're distributing the survey amongst the buildings, so I should have the full results soon. We, the next activity we're planning is an ice cream truck in September. And we also had several presentations in the dining hall this month, a GBT, GBTA presentation. And Jennifer Gillis came to assist with rent rebate and those two presentations were well attended.
Good. The three unoccupied units, are they undergoing any renovation or getting ready or are they ready to rent?
I can speak on that. I've been working closely with Ann for our waitlist over at the congregate. And right now we're waiting on a couple of people to get back to us and to make sure that we're getting the updated information, all updated paperwork because the paperwork that we do have was when they first applied back in 2023, so all updated information has to be given. And we have also put in place a new application that's going out to those that are applying now, but two of the three are already renovated and going through the motions to try to get those housed. And then one is we're just waiting for the family to hand in the keys at the end of this month. Yeah.
Okay. So there, you have a waitlist and a good possibility that-
Yes, so right now we have 19 at the congregate.
Oh, good, okay. Very good. All right. Anything else, Ann?
That's it.
Okay. Can I ask if lunch is better attended?
Uh, well, I should know that you're at us. Yes. You're at us, um, working in the kitchen and it's very well attended.
Okay, good. All right. Resident Service Coordinator, is Lisa there?
No, Lisa's out sick today, but I have her report. The Jewish Family Service Mobile Food Pantry was at Trumbull Housing on July 11th and August 8th. There was a slight reduction in the number of residents that came because due to the rain and heat wave. Broker at Henrich conducted a presentation of Anthem Plans on July 16th. Live Well Workshop is then sponsored by Agency on Aging. And they would speak on chronic conditions and that was held on June 20th through August 1st. There were 12 residents that attended. And for those residents that attended had a perfect attendance, they received a certificate on completion of the Live Well Workshop. And we had a home care agency here to, like, it was a lunch and learn. So they donated Bosie Lunch for the residents. And 30 residents attended and she's in the process of securing a date for presentation on hospice for either September or October. And right now she's currently doing a meet and greet for the residents here, so she would know the residents at the, at the village. And that's, that's her report.
Jason, Jason is coming. He's, he's having computer issues. He'll be on in a minute.
Thank you. You have a dinner at Stern Village this Saturday, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Good. I saw they were asking for volunteers to serve. Maybe I will pop up. And what time is that? Four o'clock?
It's at four o'clock, yes. Actually, it's a, it's an indoor cookout.
Yeah.
So. Excuse me, you need a punch? Okay. It's an indoor cookout, so they're gonna bring, you know, the hamburgers, hot dogs, coleslaw, day salad, baked beans, and a plant on.
Okay.
So, yeah.
They're well attended.
Yes, we, we have the list, so the list was cut off today at four, so we have 48 tenants coming.
Okay. All right.
On Saturday.
We will see you. All right, any questions on that report? Okay, property manager.
Hello, it is I. Um, okay, so we are at 91.40% of our units being occupied. We have right now 16 occupied units and that was ran through this month. I did run a, um, yeah, unoccupied, yeah, did I say occupied? My bad, unoccupied, 16. Um, I did run a report as of July 31st too, so we were 90% occupied then and 18 units were open. We did have three unexpected move outs, so as we're filling, we're also getting the move outs. So that could, could take quite a toll on what we've been doing. Then we have 30 work orders open right now compared to our numbers from last time, which is really great. 32 combined from the year were closed out this month. I ran that report this afternoon as well. And then currently our waitlist for Stern Village stands at 135. We have been housing as quickly as we can. Paperwork and application processes take a little bit longer. We're doing everything by mail, so it's timestamped and authentic and all that. Since then, we've had 13 people removed for various reasons. One was put at the bottom of the list because of medical reasons. And then the rest were whether, didn't qualify or the rent was too high or, you know, various reasons. So 13 of those applicants were removed just within the last two months. We did have three new people join our THA family here at Stern. I've checked in with the families and made sure their paperwork is updated in the system and stuff and everything seems to be going well. And that's pretty much it for me. Any questions?
Not for you, but maybe back to Ann or to Paulette. Or maybe you're gonna get to it in your report. Let's, let's go on. I know Maureen is not there. Jason, is there anything that, you know, you wanna highlight on the financial report or Laurel, if you have questions on the, on the financial report?
I'll start with the main thing is, you know, the trucks already, they, they bought a large tractor attachment and the truck had some substantial repairs. I think they actually had to tow the truck, right? Those weren't necessarily budgeted or thought to be budgeted items, at least in that, that, not that extent. So that's kind of the biggest overrun already for the year. Otherwise, there really hasn't been much maintenance yet. Which, you know, has been historically the, you know, the issue, so to speak. The only other thing I could say on the financial means is we're still under talks about how to use the 150,000 net capital funds that are being generated for the year. I know we talked about continuing to invest them in units and getting units online. I, I just talked with Jackie last time I was there. Paulette had a conversation with the week before. But we still are looking to kind of get quotes and a plan of attack on just how many units or just how to best use those funds specifically, not necessarily whether or not to do units, but which units do more of the easy ones or less of the harder ones. So I think that's kind of where we're at this point. I'm still waiting to see if Paulette and Jackie can kind of get some additional information from the contractor there.
Yeah, well, speaking about the contractor, just to give them a quick shout out, we have been really pleased with what has been happening in the units. It's just left for our guys to go in, clean and get ready for people to be housed. So right now we have four, three of them, which Hiller just finished, to be cleaned out, appliances to be installed. And then from there, we can start housing people. So I'm hoping that in the next month, we can get at least some September 15 lease signings with those that have qualified and get us all the paperwork in place. And then we have two lingering that as move outs happen, they're a little bit easier for our guys to go in and rehab. I do have numbers set aside that I've also submitted to Paulette based on the conversation Jason just had about what are the harder units and what they look like and what are the easier units that our guys may just be able to like quick paint and finish. But if we're looking at now going into like the CNA conversation, right, like are we going to be implementing new floors and putting in the shower stalls opposed to the tubs? Because most of our units that are vacant right now are those that have those tubs that Matt in the previous discussion was talking about. So that's what Jason and I were discussing was like, how is it that we can get things like a little bit up to code and then still address some of these updates that need to happen in our units? So that's where kind of like that trickling effect in conversations with the contractor, we would have to bring up to par.
I guess I would be curious as to how many easy units to get online quickly we could use that money for versus what are the, how many units need a major overhaul? Because I think depending on, you know, if we've got 10 units that could use a quick clean and paint and get them online in the next month or two. You know, that to me makes more sense than working, putting all the money towards maybe three that need complete rehab. But I, we'd have to know the numbers and you know, and what would be, I'd rather see us get as many units back on the, the rent roll as we could and then focus on maybe getting some funding to fix those other ones. But I don't know, not knowing the numbers.
No, yeah, and I think it's a great point to point out because like in the five units that I do have set aside that are a little bit easier for like their rehabs to happen, like that quick paint, refresh and stuff have already been renovated at some point. I think there's like two of the five that have already that, but then there's those other three that would really benefit from a new floor being installed or that shower stall to be installed because it isn't there. So if we're trying to get rid of the tubs that can be a liability in the future, right? Then you're having them in there, even though our guys can finish it fast, but do that shower stall just so that we're on the safe side. Like, you know, that's the trickling effect, you know what I mean? But it's easier for us to go in and yes, like if there is a tub in there and our guys can do it, like no doubt about it, we can start getting those. And I've been having conversations with other housing authorities that are training and talking about what's the turnaround, you know, projection that they have. Everybody's kind of all over the place, but we're really tightening up our policy to really make sure that there is at least some kind of like similar talk from other PHAs and see what that looks like. So that way our turnaround can also be, you know, state level stuff too. Like, so if it's gonna, I've had conversations where it's seven days, 14 days, 21 days. But realistically, looking at everything that's happening in the village and the priorities that keep coming in and now emergencies that every so often, you know, hit us. Like what can we really like on point stick to and not be able to drive away from that and really like have that back on our rent roll? So that way people are being housed. And then there is people that are on our waitlist right now calling every day, every week, you know, like, hey, where am I on the list? I want to know. Some people are homeless, some people are not, you know, so it's like also that balancing effect to try to get people that really can qualify and do qualify to live here and stuff like that based on paperwork and all that stuff. What can we do to house them faster?
And get, what number on your waitlist are you at? Have you gotten to?
So we went from 148 to 135. So the numbers just keep going up. Right now I have applications out, uh, one to 12. So a little bit ahead of the game there. Essentially, the conversation we had was send out an application once a unit becomes available, but that was taken a little bit too long. My first 10 people, I was like, there is no way that I'll be able to house as fast as the paperwork is coming. And they have 10 business days and that's clarified in our tenant selection plan. So what I was doing then was after that first kind of round of people that I kind of like started that with, I started doing a little bit more than anticipated. So we only have a couple of units, as I mentioned in the, in the beginning, like four units that can be readily available within the next month. But I have 12 applications already sent out, so we can do background checks, criminal checks if needed and all that. So that way we have a better scope. So when-
That what you said on top.
Exactly, it's an easy, an easy house. Yeah.
I think there, Jackie's illustrating the point on where, and this is why I always try to say we gotta enforce this, the 30-day notice, right? Is unfortunately, most of your move outs don't give you notice because they're moving out unexpectedly, right? But the ones that do give notice, you really gotta hold them to the 30 days because it does. It takes 30 days with all the paperwork turnaround to not only fix the unit, but just get somebody informed and ready and ready and waiting to kind of take that unit.
Yeah, and the unexpected, really unexpected, like we had people that unfortunately had passed and that's why they were so unexpected. There's been two in the last kind of like two months that we've gotten those 30 days, right? And we were able to, but then there are units that people have been in there for like 20 plus years. So it's like, yeah, that's a full, that goes on the hard list, not on the easy list because everything has to be updated there. Yeah.
Okay.
Jason, I have a couple of questions for you. Where is the $150,000 in the budget? Is it on the balance sheet?
No, and it, it's actually 140, I'm sorry. It's all the way down. It says provision for RMR. It's, it's the last line of the budget.
Okay.
RMR means repairs, maintenance and replacement.
Okay, so where's the cash come from?
Rents. So those, it's basically unbudgeted rents.
Right, so we don't have that money.
Well, correct. You technically have it in your reserves, right?
We, I think, may or may not be willing to touch, but I, I think the assumption when you have a budget is that that budget is based on income that you get every month.
Yep.
Okay, so one question I do have for you is non-operating expense other, which is a non-budgeted item for $12,000. What is that, please?
That is the tree removal and pruning. From, I don't know, the, the vendor, Arbor-
Arbor Mates.
Arbor Mates. That's the guy that went around and pruned all the dead trees, removed limbs from over the roofs. Things of that nature. And yes, that was not one of the budgeted items. And it was considered in essence, in essence, part of the 140. So now you're not at 140. You're at best case 128.
Okay, so I would just like to remind people, please, that our, we have a procedure in place and anything over budget that's more than $5,000 needs to come to the board for approval prior to expenditure. And the other thing I just wanted to note is the vacancy loss is already up to $9,000 for the first month of the fiscal year. So I get wide because now that you're telling us there's that many units. Are in general, are people getting older? I mean, are we, is, is that one of our problems that we're taking folks that are? Okay. I don't want to go much further with that. Okay.
And then it also, like we, I mentioned the units that are being vacated are those that need a lot of work because they've been in there for so long.
Okay. So I would just like to remind you guys that the $150,000 you don't actually have it. So if you're really gonna come up with a plan, you need to present it to us well ahead of time because you are literally going to have to take that money out of savings. As you can tell by the, by that report, I was aghast to see that once again, we have about, I'm, I'm, I can't really remember what the number is, $45,000 in cash in Stern Village and we owe $43,000. So in terms of a financial structure, you, you know, you can't be that close. If all, if all of your payables came due today, you'd end up with $2,000 left in your checking account. So that's kind of not a great place to be in terms of cash. So the expenditures that you're suggesting for that $150,000 can clearly not come out of your regular checking account. So you need to give us a really strong proposal about what you plan to do with it. Why? And then we are literally, if you're gonna do it all at once, this time we are literally gonna have to take it out of savings. Okay, and you cannot do that without our approval. So just to, just so we're all on the same page on this. And I think that's all I have, Kathy. Thank you.
Okay.
I think just to chime in a little bit there. To, to bounce off Laurel's point is the expectation and the reality of where the vacancies are at after just one month is really where Jackie and I kind of bounced off the point of, hey, maybe originally we were gonna try to get rid of these initial units real quick type of thing and start getting those, those larger ticket units back online. Maybe we want to pivot and say, hey, maybe more units for the money is, is the better. Even if that means four or five units are gonna sit around for a longer time, right? And, and, and I think the, the numbers aren't clear. It's more like how much really can, you know, 10 units be done for? Right? Can the guys do some, you know what I mean? Like, so I think that's kind of where we're trying to pivot that talk with Hiller. See if there's, you know, obviously not just kind of, and I've said this multiple times to Paulette, not give him a number because that's not, we're not working with, hey, we want to spend this number. How can we get the most bang for our buck? Like, two units is probably not worth our time, right? I don't know. If you're gonna charge us $20,000 a unit and we're not getting anything for two, other than just the two units, well, maybe that's not what we want to do, right? Maybe we want to go the lighter route and get six units for 15,000 or something. You know, I don't know the numbers. But certainly when we found that the normal turnover is kind of not stabilizing, right? It's, it's not getting much better. I mean, it's not getting worse, but it's still floating kind of where we'd hoped it not be. That this was the pivot. And absolutely, to Laurel's point, this is a fact-finding mission. It is what would it cost to do X versus Y? Not, you know, let's go. Because to her point, the, the money isn't there yet. You know?
I, I did actually have one other question for you with the congregate. I, I noticed there's still 133 or something thousand dollars in, in the checking account. And I know part of that is due the DOH at some point. I know you're also suggesting that we're going to transfer money and repay some of the loan to Stern. To, I, I think your, your point was to smooth out the cash. That one is tight on cash, the other one is flush, like crazy flush with cash.
Right.
My challenge with this is, Jason, if you're not putting some of the cash aside, we know we owe it. It's a liability. If you transfer half of the money in congregate over to Stern and then the DOH comes back and said, you owe me 50 grand. Who's gonna pay that? I think we both know it. Stern is.
Yep.
So I, I, I think there needs to be a conversation maybe internally somehow about, you know, do we pull that money out, put it in a savings account? We know we owe it. It's not really ours. Are, you know, do we really need it so desperately? I mean, I think it needs kind of a, a conversation with you in management. Where are we with this cash knowing full well that some portion of it, and I have no idea what that number is, some portion of that money is not ours, period, end of story.
Right.
We are holding it, but we owe it. And I, I kind of the fluctuation of, oh, we're gonna pay Stern back with one hand and then two months later, oh, whoops, by the way, Stern, we need 50 grand from you. Well, where's Stern gonna get 50 grand from reserves? So I'm, I'm, I would like you guys to really have a conversation about what do we do? Okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Paulette?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Jackie, myself and Fernanda, we, we attended the Carnero Convention on Monday, Tuesday. Plenty of networking. There were a lot of classes concerning maintenance. And the classes were very meaningful. As Jason mentioned about the tree service, preventive tree service. His name is Bert. He came about maybe two years ago to do the trees. And when he came back, a lot of trees were dead. And a lot of trees were on the roofs and so he had to take care of that. And also with the storms, Debbie and Ernesto, they, they brought down a lot of limbs. So he had to come back and do a cleanup. And then he had to come back again because the trees all the way in the back of units 113, 115, the trees were so big, the limbs came down. One resident, he said he was cooking on the grill and he accidentally, you know, the tree, the limb almost missed him coming down. So, so this is all preventive, make sure that the residents don't get hurt. Also to beautify the property. But the thing is, it's been two years that the tree service has not been done and it was due to be done. Also reference to the congregate. I received from the state the final approval, so we're gonna get that work started for you and the the emergency call system and the fire panels. I just have to get Barnum to sign off again and also myself. And I spoke with one of the state. His name is Trevon. So I could sign all those papers and also for Barnum to sign off and we can start the project as soon as possible. We're still waiting for the cameras to be installed. We spoke with HAI, which is our insurance company. And we have to wait till maybe the first week in September to get you know, the AOK, whether or not we would even approve for the, for the grant. So we'll keep you posted on that. Ross came by. He, he assessed that unit with a severe problem. He came today. So he will have all the numbers in place for us to see how much it will cost. So we have to wait maybe another week or so, but he came today to assess the unit. That those two tenants were moved to another unit for safety measures. They were given documentation to sign off stating that if they should, lack for a better word, destroy or damage the other unit, they would have to pay for it. We did get okayed by the attorney to state that to them. Um, so we would not, as, so Trummer House would not be, uh, in trouble. So they understood that if we find any serious problems in the unit they are in now, um, they will be charged. Um, they want to go back to their original unit, which is fine. It's going to take some time, but the letter, the document they sign will follow them into their original unit. They state that if the property should persist, um, they will be charged for the, for the damages. And that's it.
I think Paulette, um, just to follow up on Laurel's point. Um, you know, an emergency tree service is understandable, but for beautification and removing some limbs and things for that, because they hadn't been there in two years, that bill should come to the, the board for approval before, um, you contract with them. So just be aware, anything over five thousand dollars really needs to come, come back to us. Thank you.
Okay, I understand.
Okay. Um, I don't have anything under new business unless somebody has better memory than I do as far as, uh, I'm still in, on, on my vacation mode or old business. Any public comment? Before we go to our executive session for discussing proposal for repair, some of the proposals for repair. Anybody on Bill?
Uh, if there's anybody who would like to make a comment, please uh, click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you're on the phone. Uh, no takers.
Okay. All right, then, um, we will leave this meeting. Um, just trying to think who needs to come with us for executive session. Um, Jason, I think I need you. Not dinner time yet. Laurel, Sarah, Paulette. Me, um, Laurel, Jackie? Jackie, you want Dawn?
And Dawn, yeah.
And Dawn. Do we need Ann at all? No, it doesn't involve her, her building. Okay, so, um, if everybody would leave, then we have to come back to this meeting, right, Bill? You'll have to let me in. All right, so leave this meeting and Bill has sent an invitation to executive session. Um, and we will meet in executive session.
Did we move in second?
Oh. Uh, no, we didn't. I need a motion to go into executive session. Sarah? And well, I'll have to second it because Laura left. All right, so we'll go to executive session. Thank you. But leave this meeting.
Are we, yeah, I bet we are. Am I waiting for anybody else? No. We got Laurel. We just need Laurel. Where did she go? Yep, she can't get on. Yes. Oh, yeah, okay.
Hear me?
Laurel's on speaker. Can you hear her? Say hello, Laurel.
Not really.
What?
Not really.
No.
All right, hold, hold on.
Bill, I'll have Bill send you the link again. Can you send me? Okay.
Hi, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, um, I make a motion, uh, that, uh, the board asked the staff to obtain additional quotes for repair of unit 171.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Yeah. Okay. Any discussion or? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And I think we are, we are good. Motion to adjourn?
So moved, Laurel.
Second, Sarah.
Okay, at seven thirty-one. All right, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.